Vote for right now. We're going to call it over to the city council work session for Monday, August 28th, 2023. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the man that roll call please.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Martin Shilmanis.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
All right, on the agenda, we have scheduled two action items and we have four discussion items. So we will start with the action items under number four. First will be under A, an application for a new landscape slash tree removal license recommended for approval for Stables and Demand Services LLC at 3315 Parkway Boulevard in Two Rivers. Recommended action is a motion to approve and authorize the city clerk to issue the license. This stems back from our very last meeting where we decided to table this one to get some further information. Further background, Greg.
Yeah, thank you. There had been some concerns expressed about possible, let's say, maybe zoning code violations and things with this business being based at the applicant's home on Parkway Boulevard. Elizabeth and I had the chance to drive by last Friday. Other, what we saw Friday, other than a chipper that's parked alongside the garage and side yard, no other evidence of the business that is based there, you know, no tree limbs or sawdust or bark or anything evident on the lawn or the driveway. You know, no evidence of other vehicles parked on the street or that sort of thing. Given that observation and a confirmation from the city attorney, because you remember Jack was there Monday, that in his opinion, even though there's not language in the working at section about landscape contractors, that the council can revoke a license, he felt if a license violated one of the conditions precedent to the granting of the license, which include compliance with all relevant city ordinances, that if there was a problem, the council would still have the option of revoking. So based on, I'll say, little to no indication of any current violations and the ability if things were to get out of hand for the council to ask for corrective action and lacking that revocable license, we'd rather not do it.
Okay, and then again, we, we expect that there's a lot of people that bring their work trucks home. So you may see a cheer picker there or things of that nature, just like if you work for WPS or Spectrum Communications or stuff like that here on call, you have a on-call vehicle that you may bring, or electrician plumber, name it.
Really, the only problem is if somebody is like, you know, has their employees reporting to their house.
That's a different.
Vehicles or equipment, no evidence of that.
Yep, that's completely different. It could just make sure it's not an out of discussion vote.
Okay, no, I just wanted to say too, we had gotten a text from a neighbor who said that they haven't seen any problems. And then just refresh my memory, what were, what was the issue that we were, you know, the reason why we tabled it? What was the reason, the bad things this person was doing?
From what I understood, it was noise and kind of operating business out of their homes.
Oh, and I was on the next.
And I will say, I had a phone conversation with him on Friday and he acknowledged that early on, he didn't have a place to get rid of the waste wood or maybe to work it up afterwards. I don't know if he resells it. He has since secured a location of the country. So admittedly, it might have had a little rockier start. But again, there was no evidence looking at the property, you know, a drive-by, no go in the backyard or anything, but of any fresh activity that entered the property inside our structure.
Where did it tone, was that?
Parkway Boulevard, residential property.
Isn't that a near neighbor?
Yeah, it is. I'm the one that received a bunch of complaints.
Just make sure you don't make too much discussion of each other.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a motion yet. If you have to ask a question, give it to Greg or.
I have two.
Unless someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second, perfect, go ahead, Mike. First by Tracy, second by Darla. Thank you, that makes life a lot easier on my side.
I had gotten two emails from neighbors telling me that they have a problem with him. They didn't feel like he was making noise. I did, one neighbor did say there was a lot of construction going on in that neighborhood.
There is, right, on one side, there's a major addition going on.
Yeah, because they didn't, they didn't know if it was because people were thinking it was him. I'm just saying that that made a lot of noise, of course, it does, due to construction, so.
Those are the same things that I got coming from people. I was just multi-annoyed there to come from. I think Ben Dickenford redoing their floor or anything.
Well, or their wrongs, the siding and everything. It took a lot of work to do.
You know, that, hearing those concerns just before the meeting last week, not knowing, not having the city attorney to answer questions, well, geez, even if it's approved, could it be revoked? Seemed prudent to hit the pause button just for a week at this point for staff recommendation.
I got a similar email to what, I'm wondering if I can get a similar.
Yeah.
I got a Facebook message from immediate neighbor who said they had a problem.
That's all.
I think we, a lot of us got that, I bet same. Bro, I got a message there most of the time. Which is good, that's what the communication form, we did open. Any other further discussion before we take this one to a all in favor vote? Anything? All in favor, Nicky, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. On to B, recommendation from the environmental advisory board regarding change in name and changes for that board blessing. Recommended action is a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to make such changes. It looks like in our packet, we do have the minutes from their meeting on Tuesday, July 18th of this year. If you had a chance to read that over, maybe follow along, otherwise Greg, do you have any other background?
I would say the recommendation committee is something probably on the screen. Okay. And the environmental advisory board, like most of our boards, unless it's a board or committee of limited duration, like Central Park Planning or the Branding Committee, do have their basis in the city ordinances. There's existing ordinance language in this, as I understand it, is what the committee would propose, take its place. I don't, I don't think anything changes as far as the board make up our terms. We relate more to the title and objectives. And both Darla and Tracy serve on the board, so I'll defer to them as to rationale for those recommendations.
Well, I'm gonna have Tracy walk you through it. She's willing to vote this up. And there's some really good reasons for doing, doing what she's suggesting, so do you want to go ahead?
It's, it's just a matter of two things. One, expanding the objectives to what was there before, which was pretty much, pretty much a, maybe suggesting trees for public use. And this, this just, this board actually initiated by Darla and is very successful. People, people are liking it very much. And by adding, just adding that simple word of sustainability opens you up to grants and funding sources potentially that says, oh, here's a city that's looking towards being sustainable in the future. Maybe we can support some of their programs. And, and that said, it's, it's one of your current buzzwords for a lot of departments in a lot of different cities, sustainability. And that's it, nothing earth shattering.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that my understanding is when the EAB first started back in the seventies, that it was about trees. And then, but what we're doing now, it's going above and beyond it. And I think that this shows a lot, you know, we're not getting pigeonholed. Not that that was stopping us before, we're just doing it. But now it's kind of like somebody would want to come on the board. Now, when they read that, they'll have a much better understanding as to what we're all about. Maybe, you know, would they be interested or not? So I think it's, it's time to do something like this.
Questions, we will open it up for questions to the board, not necessarily discussion amongst everyone, I guess, discussion with the board because they're the ones that are bringing this forward. It's not something that Greg's gonna have background on. So questions.
I've got a few. Okay, I'll start. So go ahead, yeah. One, one buzzword, I don't see it in here, but whatever counts, that might be worth adding would be resiliency. Because whether, whatever anybody thinks about what may be causing some of the things we're facing, like unusual weather events, there's a lot of discussion, especially like for Great Lakes shoreline communities, about how are you resilient? So if the lake goes up and it's lapping the highway, you waste part of plant. You know, how do you plan for that? Because we've experienced in the last 10 years, record lows and irrecoverables. Just, that's my only.
So, so you're talking about maybe putting it in the title?
Title, maybe a bullet point too.
Bullet point?
Yeah.
Where we say, consider.
So we don't invest in something with the next cycle of high lake levels. Whatever the cost, we have one there. Whatever the cost allows us to avoid incurring expenses or losses.
Is it, you know?
That's all.
Yeah, definitely work it in.
What do we, what do you mean by sustainability initiatives? What are those initiatives that we are looking to develop and to develop external funding for?
I don't have any, any specifically in mind.
Okay.
It's if an opportunity, you know, presents itself, we would, we can certainly, we have a, we have a venue that we can consider those things through. That's it.
I didn't know, I didn't know if they're like examples.
No, you know, I went looking through.
As to how you came up with, came up with that, I guess, I didn't know if there's an example.
No, no, no specific examples. I took some of this language from different cities that already have such a thing.
Okay.
And I pulled different objectives out, there were lots of them. And I pulled out those that would probably most pertain and were generic enough for the city of Two Rivers, you know, we didn't need to get super specific. And I look at things like, you know, the Inflation Reduction Act has got all that green money in it. And then I went looking through there to see if there was anything that could specifically hit on for the city currently. I'm not so far, I'm waiting for rebates to be presented too, and they don't have the framework for that. But, you know, just, our city staff has a lot of work. And if we come across something, we'll be able to support them.
Then the other one was when it says, help provide technical assistance on strategies to achieve cost savings through resource conservation and efficiency. What and how? What, I just don't know what we're trying to accomplish at all.
Well, the technical assistance, not unlike, we, we already are providing assistance through the education programs to help with our soon to be announced TMDLs. Are they soon to be announced, Matt?
Two or three months old.
Those count, those count towards, if I'm not mistaken, those count towards our, what we do to reduce our loads, our TMDLs, right?
Last winter's library educational series, quite a few of them were on stormwater. So we could actually use those educational series then, or our MS4 permit, stormwater permit through the DNR. So we could view those as educational credits or public outreach. Similarly, technical assistance, how can we provide assistance for residents helping maintain their own farm problems, so rain gardens, water filters? How can we encourage the transformation between turf grass and native plants? So kind of a little part of our technical series for this winter is going to be on solar and things of that nature. And that series will begin in the, or in the electric department will be putting that on. As far as how do we utilize solar, how do we minimize electrical waste against driving these sustainable? So we're hoping to get our presentation on that.
And we will have a full complement of the series, probably in the next week or two. So then everybody will kind of see what we use that we're doing. But yeah, I mean, what we're doing right now, that was never, that, that wasn't something that was really ever considered. It just kind of organically happened. But there's a, a time and a place for it. And like with the MS4 report, it works out beautifully. And to Tracy's point, you know, I, I hate to say the word buzzword, but it is, but there's good reason for it. So if it helps us to get any kinds of grants, because what we're talking about right now is working with partners upstream, you know? Maybe there's some sort of grant that we can get so we can work with them, you know? We just, this is only gonna help us.
Okay. I just, I'm not sure on that bullet point. I mean, we're gonna have, we're gonna have city staff work with people on how to transform our yards and rainwater and, and all this sort of stuff.
We are, the EAB will help with that.
Oh, because I thought Matt just said city staff.
They're putting.
I sit on that committee as technical resource of the committee in that particular board. So I'm guiding them regarding stormwater, stormwater management, things of that nature. I'll be, again, this is Tracy and Darla's kind of expansion. And again, EAB, our original startup, small, hit recycling and expanded the more current recent topic than stormwater and how we improve stormwater quality because of the MS4 permit through the DNR. Now it's gonna be the TMDL on top of that. And then, yep, how do we deal with electric, electrical demands? And do we look at EAB and solar and so what are other resources that can be looked at? And again, to Tracy's point is how we potentially use this as leverage and additional funding for whatever.
So I, I'm very confused on this one. So I mean, when we talk about grants as well, I mean, it's a hundred percent grants? Or are they grants where we gotta match EAB budget? It's literally matching it out.
There are no specific grants. It's about future potential funding. You don't know, this just puts you in a generic, generic, general spot. It doesn't hurt anything, it doesn't, it's not going to, I don't know, it just provides an overview. It also attracts talent to your EAB, which, whatever resilient, sustainable. Because the, the folks that, that are showing interest in this committee now, this board, are people who have real experience in the world of environmental and energy, conservation, all that stuff. So anytime you can draw on your citizenry to share their experience and their expertise, it makes you stronger. And that's, that just provides a venue for that. There are no specific grants we're chasing at this point.
Right, I'm just asking because there's not an EAB budget in order to get like a matching grant. So I, I don't know where we're trying to get grants from, was my confusion.
It's gonna be a partner grant, it would be a stormwater grant. Again, some sort of shoreline restoration, the word sustainability and or resiliency, both of them can lead to some of those grants. And again, utilizing that in my past workplace.
Well, for me, I guess I would rather see number three out of there without any further background. But that's, that's my. As to exactly how that's gonna work and operate.
You know, if I could, something comes to mind and it wasn't driven by the EAB's discussion, but we, in our harbor master plan that the council adopted in 2013, we want to get on the harbor to include areas north and south. And to the south by the DPW wastewater plant, there's a plan that shows some measures to maybe do shoreline stabilization, reintroduce native plant species there and make that what it could be, a very attractive public beach. Part of it might be another issue for another day. But right now, there's some additional, when they have to revisit Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, GLRI related, that is for, and part of that is shoreline resiliency because that stretch of shoreline is right by our wastewater plant and water plant, which were clearly endangered the last time the lake was up. So something like this might help my, this ain't, I don't have a dog in this fight. Adam mentioned earlier, but I look at it on bullet points one and two. Number one, I like the word help or assist because it doesn't say they're driving a bus, whether it's electric or diesel. But help develop environment and sustainability initiatives that align with the city's strategic plans. So I see that as a good reason, just say what happened, but say the EAB came up with some kind of maybe idea. Say the council said, where the hell, where, where, where casting, where the heck did that come from? Well, wait a minute, it has to show that it aligns with the strategic plan. And if it doesn't, that'd be a pretty good reason to say, ah, nope. Maybe number two becomes more palatable if it says assist in developing external funding or pursuing, probably aren't going to develop the external funding.
Pursue.
Pursuing external funding and partnerships to support such sustainability initiatives instead of goals. But one says, hey, you got a, city's got a strategic goal, here's a sustainability initiative that fits with it. And then point number two, here's some external funding that could help implement that initiative. I think with a little wordsmith thing, again, I don't quote on this, but one and two could make a lot of sense. Because it starts with the, the condition that they align with the city's strategic plans. Those would be plans adopted by this body. I'll, I'll shut up now.
And the last one.
And the last one is what you're doing already. And again, I don't really have a problem with one and two, I like the way Greg kind of worded, reworded those, I guess. I, I think it's great, I guess it's, that's.
What's wrong with three?
Well, do you mind if I?
We, we, go ahead, I'm not even asked that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted him to clarify what he was having a problem with. And I was.
The fact that we keep talking about grants without an EAB board, we're talking, so not about EAB board, I'm sorry, without an EAB budget, we're talking about working on a lot of things that are gonna take up staff time. I mean, we always have staff time that is limited, we know that. And I think coming up with these initiatives to go on all these other things when we should be working on other things is gonna cause a problem to me.
So you're, you're saying.
Okay, after Tim, I'd like to say a.
After Bill?
Go ahead. So you're, you're saying help buy technical assistance, you're thinking that's gonna be staff time?
That's when, when I asked that question, it was, it was EAB ham act.
I thought you meant you wanted to attract people that had more technical knowledge. So EAB would, or E whatever, I would have able, so they would actually be doing the technical assistance? Not, not staff?
Well, when we asked the question, it was staff.
Yeah, they were, they get a very good answer, obviously.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, um the one thing that I do know, the D N R looks to see if we educate the community.
Mm-hmm.
And in that way, this is gonna be good, it's points for us, you know, this is
I like the, I like one, two and three, I have a one, two and four.
Yeah. But I can understand your concern about, you you're concerned that the commit- committee is gonna start spending money, is this correct? Is that a good way to
To a point, yes, cuz then we're gonna be chasing grants, we have to write these grants.
Yeah.
But we don't really have a E A B budget, which we don't for most boards and commissions or committees for that matter. I don't think anyone do.
We would be more support for um grants that um Public Works Engineering is pursuing. It wouldn't be grants that we're, you know, um just doing as a board, so those really aren't, after they usually are in conjunction with a s- a project. So really, it's what the city is doing or planning to do and how can we incorporate some of the things that E A B is looking at? And could we get, you know, further, it's on grant money for the project.
I just figured a lot of those would come then from uh the committee for Department of Public Works and their utilities though. When it supports their their particular department. Wanted.
I don't know, it couldn't hurt to to back up, you know, these requests for grants and say, hey, look, we have um we're concerned about sustainability and resiliency, you know. To to Tracy's point, I mean, it can hurt us and buzzwords, they're important.
Tracy.
Well, actually, number three doesn't even talk about soliciting or chasing grants or anything, it talks about, you know, assisting us on, you know, if they had strategies to achieve cost savings, for example.
Right.
Matt mentioned things like um uh bio swells and stuff. And and we can help that with Corinne or somebody can put together a brochure and we can get that out um so that folks in the in the area are aware of that and it'll, you know, it'll provide um cost savings to our street sweeping and and such. I I don't see where it's, you know, it's, and we can also get rid of it.
Well, the biggest one, I asked the question, it came back, you you said something about grants.
Yeah, because I, there's, because there's a part of me that's well aware of grants that aren't necessarily state and and federally supplied. There are private grants and um especially like things like your resiliency on the coast there, especially if they um are big companies that make things that they want um to try in different um communities so that they can say, hey, look what we did here in Two Rivers.
Bio projects.
Yeah, and don't you all up and down the west and and east coast want the same thing?
Yeah, I was just going
Then we get it done for nothing.
I was just going based off the answers and then that's where I got the grants from.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
I know it doesn't say that black and white, but when I asked how they came back to grants, that's why I'm bringing up, I'm not
Yeah, yeah, and I understand that, I'm like, just like what I
Yeah, it's not up there, it is not up there.
I put that in there, but I forgot.
It might not hurt, I mean, you know, just the same thing as they do for Main Street. If I I go out there and I look for grants, just what's out there, what's available? And if I see something that might possibly be something that we can use, I just shoot an email off with a link, you know, and uh you know, it would be up to engineers to have something like that would fit in or if it were. So that's kind of where, you know, we're just, we are support for public works. And that's why, you know, we we are in in total support of the strategic plans and how can environmental um initiatives be incorporated in that? Cuz that's a, that's a thing, that that is huge, um.
Would it water it down too much, I'm sorry, I don't want to put a wordsmith here, shouldn't put this up at words.
Why not? Wordsmithing is important.
But uh could, what if it said something like, help identify opportunities to achieve cost savings? So it is a great program out there or
Yeah, take the technical assistance.
Or here's case studies from some other city. I I worry a little there, A, thank you committee, we don't want your technical assistance.
Yeah.
Uh but if it really is the late latter part, hey, there's some ways that the city could save money for taxpayers, rate payers, through resource conservation and efficiency, that's that's a good thing. I bet you can get the unanimous vote on that. But maybe it's helping identify opportunities. Technical assistance on strategy sounds like either staff or the committee. And then maybe people with those individual skill sets, like, you know, yours, you know, they're
Yeah, but if I leave your committee, then you lose that technical assistance.
This is a suggestion, help identify opportunities to achieve cost savings through resource conservation and efficiency.
I like that.
That seems kind of benign.
Cuz that kind of just, it's kind of oxey.
Jeff.
In my humble opinion, this whole thing is pushing a liberal agenda, just like everything else in the country. It really is. I mean, if you go through things, um we already have a grant writer, so I mean, what does number two have to do with anything? Uh number three, Department of Public Works takes care of most of that. It just seems like kind of an overreach, I I don't know, I'm not in support of any of that.
Everyone's entitled to their opinion, but someone to laugh at that is ridiculous. You don't see anyone up here laughing at people's opinions. So please refrain from doing stuff like that.
Do we do that?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, e- even going on, though, I need more parts, but I mean, the benefit of solar power, alright? Currently, there's benefits, but now what are you gonna do in twenty five years when everything out there solar is junk and you can't do anything with it? It's it's an agenda, that's all I have to say.
Different people bring different agendas to the table.
Right. I don't, I don't
There are people that say, you know, okay, a coal plant on the lakefront, there's a there's a constituency for that. Yep. I kind of expect, and I'm not criticizing anyway, I kind of expected that there are into the debate here. There are a lot of people in the community that feel strongly about qual- community quality of life, being a community clean environment is part of that. Doesn't mean you do some whacked out things and maybe you're being advocated by folks that are good on the fringe.
I mean, I think maybe with some reworking of the words, especially as much as you can work on three, at least could have some support for me, but I, one and two and four, I'm fine with it. Three gives me a lot more to me personally.
I guess the way Greg worded number three would help. For me personally, it would be, like Greg had said, it'd be whatever he would use, whatever word to use, um instead of providing technical assistance.
Yeah.
Identify those opportunities.
Those opportunities, not that they're gonna do it or supply money for it or whatever. Kind of like with the help development, environmental sustainability initiatives, they're helping to develop it. They're not necessarily spending money to do it, so I, for me, three, that would help with what Greg had mentioned.
Yeah, cuz I mean, we have a lot of boards and committees that kind of, we shouldn't have a lot of things. It's not bad to overlap on some things, but we shouldn't be chomping some of what the other committees are doing, especially when it comes to the council committees and our utilities and public works. Those three have the three votes essentially that 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 stuff forward and or just not in that manner.
Well, we can take this back to the E A B, we meet next month and we can reword number three. But as far as the grants, it, we're a support role, the whole thing, we're a support role to public works. And that's our, that's our mission, um but you know, I mean, if they're if there's a unit doing a project that's down the road four or five years, now would be the time to incorporate some of the cost savings. You know, so once you get to a certain point with a project, you can't, you can't go back, you can't back settle and fit things in, they have to be up front. So that's just all we do is we are support. And we try and do what we can for the M S four report because you all know how I feel about storm wars. So I mean, that that's what initiated all of this. And whatever we can do to 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 make the city better, you know, when it comes to all the the finesse and the nailing with these other agencies, it it's not bad.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are all these changes, you know, see, at least in our history today, you know, there's the ebb and flow of politics at the national level and sometimes, I'm not picking an argument, sometimes it can be a very conservative administration with very conservative policies. And at the local level, hopefully you don't buy into that, hoo-ha, you say from a city standpoint, what is best for this community? And there's some good things to be had. The pendulum can swing the other way, doesn't mean you buy into whatever. And a a more liberal elected government puts in place, but there may be some things that make sense. And in both cases, if you're going for grants, you better use the right terms and show that you get what they're talking about. Doesn't mean you buy into somebody's whole agenda, but if you're smart about it, and this community's in smarter about this council, because you recognize those opportunities. Some administrations have and whatever legislatures have one set of priorities, some have others. And somewhere in each is probably some who is good for your community, but it doesn't mean you buy into an agenda or a philosophy. Please God, don't let us operate that way in the local level.
No, and we shouldn't, but we don't, we also don't wanna force this on people either as as we get into saying, hey, solar is a good thing and and start pushing this on the people. Um which will be allowing them to make that, no, I'm I'm saying we don't want to be in that position.
So we're we're not pushing it. No. Yeah. Oh, no, there's no way
Pushing stuff on people, we want, allow them to make their own decisions. And as a city, we're here to support them and help them and and make what they need. So if it is solar, it is rain, whatever Matt was talking about with his things, so be it if they're looking for help, then we should provide that resource that they're looking for help, we're not not pushing those resources out.
I'm glad you said resource because one of the things we wanna do with the educational series this this year is to record and and start a library of of videos that people can watch. Um and then also, we'd kind of like to be like a clearinghouse for, and it wouldn't be us saying, you you need to do this or we suggest to do that. It's more of a, here's some links to, you know, some websites that you might be able to get some information from.
Right.
So that's, you know, so we're helping to to guide too, to have that that library built up. And now's the time to do it, I wish we had done it last time, but we just didn't.
And I don't mind, I don't mind the community outreach and the education, I I think they're great. I don't defend them, they they're not my cup of tea, but there's other people in the community who are not here to support what I like, we're here to support what the community likes, and there's other people that, I do support you in doing it, it's just, it's not something that I'm gonna go watch.
And 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 wordsmithing or not, we can get, we can get rid of button three at our, you know, item three
I'm rarely watching sports.
Because this is not, this is just a suggestion, you know, so, yeah, and wordsmithing or whatever, but yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we can look at three and come back to you guys.
And I love just to see the race, but yeah.
We're just, we really are all about providing um education and opportunities for people to, for consumers to to educate themselves. For myself, I am thinking about solar panel font group and so I
Something people haven't done, I see.
Yeah, and I I I was investigating them over the weekend and I saw something dot org. Um and I thought, oh, good, it's not an actual company. And so I hit the link, I filled in all the information, I wisely put in my landline and not myself, only because when I went to the next but it said next, here was a list of about a hundred and fifty providers of solar panels, installation and stuff that they wanted to give me a quote. And all I was looking for was the cost for, you know, and how reliable the pros and cons for the um new solar shingles that actually Tesla took over from Monsanto and they were pushing them. And then when I saw the pros and cons, I thought, you know what, I don't even wanna cost, these things are bad. But yet, somebody saw that and they called me right before this meeting.
That doesn't shut.
Really?
Uh on the home phone to wanting to give me information and a cost, and so I told them what I was doing. And, you know, I was like
I mean, there's a spot for all those for, again, everyone wants solar panels in my house, but some people do like that
So I would, would
and we should be able to help them with that information, it can guide them through the best that that we can.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's still expensive, so.
Um but but again, to Tracy's point, with all those people calling her, we don't wanna be the ones pushing that on people. And that's why I just brought that up, is we don't wanna be jamming that down people's throats, cuz that's not, in my opinion, not at least not our place.
So as long as I'm on the E A B, before we pass out any links, I personally will go through them so that you don't have a hundred and fifty.
Sure.
So we
Look at them and we will, we'll take them looking either it comes out or it just gets reworded.
Are you looking for a recommendation or are you gonna take this back then? You're gonna take this back to E A B and come back before city staff uh spends time to prepare an ordinance amendment?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll come back.
So we will, it's on the agenda for a recommendation, we do not have a motion. Just stayed in discussion so that we could move right on from this one. And I will look forward to that after the E A B meeting with uh some change in the bullet points and I'm sure you'll talk with Greg on someone to word it.
I was gonna say, I'll take, I'll take the liberty of wordsmithing and send it, yeah.
Yeah, I like what you
Or if Amanda's got notes on it, however we wanna do it, that's why it's just, it's gonna have those notes. Okay, perfect, we can move right on from that, we're gonna go to discussion items, again, there are four of those under number five. The first one is an update on bike, plant bicycle pedestrian safety improvements in conjunction with State Highway forty two Memorial Drive and the Washington Street Bridge Resurfacing Plan by twenty twenty five. This is information only, uh boy, and Greg may be teamed up with Matt.
I'll serve it up real quickly and hand it over to Matt, which to my relief and everybody else's. Uh the resurfacing of Memorial Drive all the way from Waldo Boulevard to the lake and twelfth street intersection by McDonald's here in town, remains scheduled as a twenty twenty five project by D O T. That, and I'll let Matt explain the scope of the work, it's not a reconstruction, but it's a resurfacing, but with some drainage infrastructure and other things. Uh we have engaged in recent years on a few things, saying, for example, we'd like to see some pedestrian safety improvements incorporated. We have a very dangerous intersection at by McDonald's, or especially for pedestrians, trying to safely get across there. We have other crossing points, notably at Mariners Trail, it's outside beaches, like in Madison Street, at Columbus, where some enhancements would be appropriate. Uh as we get into the further, I can find out we provided in T I D number twelve hotel tip when it was amended a couple of years ago for some resources to help cover some of the local expenses for things D O T has said that's lovely, but we ain't paying for it. Uh so with this project coming up in twenty twenty five, some recent information as far as design considerations specific to those pedestrian improvements. Uh and the fact that, as you'll see as this plays out, it may mean some city word for twenty twenty four, but it was appropriate tonight if we have an update on this. And with that, Matt, you can feel free to borrow my computer or to be bluntly and I will advance the slides, or I'll try to anticipate.
What was worked, uh as Greg said, uh this is a project from Waldo to uh basically the Washington Street Bridge. Uh primarily D O T portion is for spring of twenty five. Um the primary uh activity is going to be pavement repair, culvert repairs uh along that stretch and then mill off two inches and put uh new asphalt surface on, including uh in some cases, removal of beam guard and then replacement of some of the beam guard. And then down in Mount Walk, uh modifying the Eurodrive intersection to make it more uh perpendicular versus a skewed um intersection. So it would be nice to have that on some of our intersections up this way, uh the real estate just as a there to make that happen, so.
By the way, that beam guard remove replace, that's, none of that was really driven locally, that's D O T standards.
D O T standards are
Any any guard rail up there after the project's done, it'll be new guard rail, it won't be as much of it, that's what we're saying.
And uh the beam guard is well past its expiration or useful life, so that's why it's being replaced, so.
I got a question.
Yep.
Um so they're doing a lot of culverts, or culverts, I should say, is that something that they're working on? Is that like a run through the infrastructure plan that came down from the fest? Because I noticed even here in Two Rivers, I think that was still Two Rivers, from St. John's there, they did a culvert there.
That's the county?
That is the county. That is the county, that was the county, uh.
D O T has been doing a lot of.
Right, it's, it's, it's a county, how, it's, it's city, I think it's in the jurisdiction of the city, St. John's is correct.
They actually, it's three along that stretch.
Okay.
Uh, two closer to Sholo.
Yep.
And then, uh, one near St. John's.
So, is that from?
And the ultimate reason is the county is, uh, resurfacing a lot of the county trunks off of that thing.
Yeah, so that's one they did for next year. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, with the culverts, a lot of them are, uh, corrugated metal and they have in some cases rusted out and full of gravel, so they are looking at replacements, either replacing with concrete or newer metal culverts, so.
All the culvert replacement is a hundred percent state cost?
Uh, pretty much, to the best of my knowledge right now, Waldo to Twelfth Lake Street is all D O T cost.
Okay.
Um, caveat on there and we'll get to those potential city costs as we come through those slides.
Is that it? Yeah, I live in the back.
And then, uh, portions of the bridge, uh, city may have costs associated with that as well, so. Uh, because of the, uh, culvert replacements and then the bridge work, D O T is looking at doing a detour. Next slide. Um, the official detour will be, uh, they have it as Q, um, but it's shown as B to three times. Both will actually work, but, uh, that'll be through the early portions of the project, so early spring, hopefully, uh, completing the culvert and bridge work, uh, around Memorial Day may go into early June, but the anticipation or the hope is to have it done at the form of Memorial Day. Um, access to the businesses and properties along Memorial Drive will remain open. Uh, sometimes they may need to come from the north or from the south, similar to the forty-two project that's going on presently, more from the city. D O T's website, uh, usually has a good, uh, description, we can advance as to where contractors will be working. Once the culvert replacement is done, uh, traffic will basically open back up to, uh, two-way traffic. Whether it'll all be pushed over to the west side or the east side or one lane in each direction, uh, more from and south from. That information hasn't been determined yet, uh, most likely come out, uh, later this year. So that's taking care of the detour. Um, as far as accommodations, pedestrian accommodations within the city, we're looking at, uh, down at Taylor Street, a permitted crosswalk, uh, right now there are signals there, but there is no walk accommodations. So they will put in a crosswalk with a refuse island, refuge.
Our future, our garbage.
Not, not garbage, um, and then they'll utilize the existing signals for, um, allowing people to walk and having traffic come to a stop.
In hindsight, that one's kind of amazing, there's been a signal there with pedestrian activated, uh, buttons to, for pedestrians to activate it since the hospital was built and there's never been a crosswalk.
Yep. Hmm. So, a lot of the crossings, uh, well, yeah, there's several unauthorized, unpermitted, uh, crossings throughout the whole Memorial Drive, um, including this one. As Greg mentioned, there, it wasn't permitted, therefore it wasn't, uh, marked or striped accordingly, so.
The city did not, by the way, contribute to that signal, that was an Aurora healthcare thing, that was their desire, given ancient history of hospitals built. And there's actually an agreement with D O T, really the city and Aurora parties to it, that if, shoot, Lakeview, the street that runs not all the way, runs behind Aurora, but it dead ends, that if that ever were connected to Woodland, the D O T would reserve the right to require that the signal be relocated to Woodland. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and hold my breath, that'll happen, but, uh, the D O T was concerned because Woodland, uh, leads to our industrial park, a lot of people use it. Uh, if, uh, there was ever connectivity of the hospital, and there is now, you know, by the medical office building, but if Lakeview is a street that were connected, they didn't let see signals at both, uh, Taylor and Lake, and Taylor and Woodland because they're so damn close. So, just as a bit of background, that was an Aurora financed improvement, D O T only allowed it with a agreement of that nature.
So, as a side note, the, uh, twenty-four inch culvert just to the north of Taylor, uh, is getting replaced. So, if they will see a case line on some of these plans where storm sewer or culvert system will be upgraded, so. Next, um, up by the Village Inn, uh, the Lake Hotel R V.
See, there are many golf carts, there are many.
Oh, lots of. The RV, uh, they are looking, D O T is looking at removing beam guard in this area and as such will provide easier pedestrian crossing and versus not jumping of the existing beam guard in that area. Uh, even though D O T acknowledges that this is an origin destination for some pedestrians, bicyclists, uh, hotel stay or RVers, uh, it is not a, going to be a permitted pedestrian crossing and as such, uh, they will not market or provide any type of accommodate, official accommodations. So it'll be unpermitted, so similar to what's out there now, uh, they're just gonna remove the beam guard, beam guard once you get to the east side of Memorial Drive.
That's some kind of crossing, there's been advocate about, um, there's a light house, or sorry, Village Inn, quite a lot. Even though that is an intersection, that, that will stub with a lullaby row, that's one.
The other aspect of that is there's public sidewalk for the crossing to go to. Um, and, yeah, I mean, that's the other primary purpose is there's no public sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, all for safety, but we don't wanna have traffic stopping every time someone jumps over all these intersections either. So probably, it's probably the smartest way to do it, cross it, cross it at your own risk, will make an opening for you, have at it.
It works better than the person that suggested to me a long time ago, with stuff like lazy susans on top of some of those, uh, beam paired posts, we could sit down and.
Jesus.
More easily rotate, we couldn't find that cross. That's by the Village Inn.
Yes.
It ain't a designated crossing, but no beam paired.
Correct.
Okay.
So, up at Columbus, uh, we'll start with the storm sewer that crosses, uh, that's a very large storm sewer. I believe it's fifty-four, sixty-inch storm sewer that is getting replaced. Uh, additionally, uh, D O T has agreed to put a pedestrian crossing on the north. Uh, and you can kind of see what median and east sides of Memorial Drive. That it is continued upon the city, providing, uh, or giving sidewalk to that landing, uh, along the north side of Columbus Street. And that sidewalk has to be installed prior to the spring of twenty twenty-five.
It's out of view, but that sidewalk right now comes down just to what was the exit drive out of the drive-throughs at the, whatever's credit.
Correct.
So the city would have to order sidewalk in, do an assessment for that frontage of the former credit.
And we are in the process of sending them a letter to, uh, get that moving forward.
It would make a heck of a lot of sense, just, you know, a lot of people that live further west on Columbus Street and that South Side neighborhood to get out there and to be able to cross.
And again, this would be a passive crossing, so there's, uh, no intent at this time to put any type of, uh, signals or electronic means of slowing the traffic down in this area.
Might they put any kind of advanced signage?
Probably.
People could change it more. Crossing ahead.
Are they gonna bring anybody in the dark for? Uh, beam guard is a, uh, that storm.
On Columbus on the drive.
Up at Madison Street, uh, again, uh, putting a crosswalk section in there, uh, the north side of the intersection. In order to do that, the D O T will reconfigure the walk, uh, existing sidewalk, um, by the way, there to basically realign it to match up with their pedestrian ramp and then putting ramps and, uh, uh, through the median and on the eastern, west side of Memorial Drive. So, we are talking about possibly putting rectangular rapid flashing beacons or R R F Bs there. Uh, because, uh, it's right next to the library, uh, potential more pedestrian use in that area than that as in being a corridor up towards, um, the Sixteenth Street Bridge, et cetera, so anticipating a little bit more pedestrian bicycle traffic through this corridor as opposed to the, uh, Columbus corridor.
There's a lot of central and north part of town accesses Mariners Trail down Madison. And right now, there's just that little asphalt connecting ramp there with no pavement markings. Our R R F Bs, you're probably all familiar with them, but just as a kind of reference, see, right by the maritime use. Madison Walk Library, push the button, pedestrian activated, they do tend to get your attention. Uh, at this location, it's conceivable, it wouldn't be two, but three with a, a two-sided one on the center island, so, you know, it's a fairly wide road there. Again, this is an area we've at least talked about and allowed for, if we could get matching donations, which would not pursue our grants in the street's capital budget for a few years. Uh, one of the nice things, uh, with the solar powered L E D signs, it's actually helped on the price front because we would have to, you know, uh, cut for wire into this intersection or, or do a directional board beneath the highway. Still, to, to check, it's one forty thousand per intersection.
I checked back on my email, uh, standard pole mounted for two hardware poles and a foundation, uh, about ten thousand dollars uh, for the pole set two.
Not a piece, but for the whole install.
Uh, plus install costs or separate.
So this might be twenty if you had a two-sided, sorry.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, you had a question, go ahead.
No, no, it's bringing you.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I, I, I like these, these, uh, crosswalks and these refugee areas. Uh, my question is gonna be now, as a city, we're gonna have to plow it. Because now it is a crosswalk and you can't come into the middle of the intersection and have a pile of snow.
I see what you're saying.
Which is great, which is fine. But now that we're gonna have two of them, is it gonna come into discussion about why not send that? That is gonna have to be U T V or A T V, whatever, whatever we use in the city, or the Gator or whatever they use, they got the smaller that we do sidewalks with. Are they gonna take that from the path and head on south to do the one by, by, uh, Taylor Street? Is that Taylor?
I, Taylor's all the way to the south.
Right, where the, the hospital is, because you're gonna have that same thing.
I.
Or are we gonna?
I don't know the answer to this, but I'll wing it. I don't think the D O T, I mean, the community might say, well, hell's bells, now you've got a safe cross, which you've got in the summertime too. I don't think with that would become a mandate, once you get across there to whether you plow or how far you plow.
No, but I think you should have to plow that crosswalk, similar to how people have to plow the end of their, their corner.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would do the same thing of that as that middle refugee and the end of the path. I'm just asking, do, do you trailer that, that small vehicle that they use, I think it's a U T V? Did you trailer that and send it up to the other ground to do the same thing, or do you just tell a thing that?
We have been, we don't.
Because people ask, that, that's a massive.
But we have been coming from Taylor Street to the Woodland Wayside.
Okay.
You at least allow, if you're at the hospital, you can use it, or if you're out there as casual user, you can't walk the whole lane short, but you've at least got a, a plow route. Because the city for years, several years now has had to plow the Woodland Wayside and all the little waysides to the north. County wash their hands of that, the state doesn't pay for it, those are city. Here, I have no idea, I would assume you'd wanna at least go north, because there is already plowing that from the Lighthouse Inn on the end, right? But does that, does that mandate plow off Mariners Trail? Well, I, maybe you weren't going that far.
No, I, I, I'm asking, I'm not telling you or, I, just, just people ask. Now that this is here, that question's gonna be asked, and I'm sure again, to have an answer. I mean, I suppose you could come and you could go towards the Lighthouse Inn and then you could put it on a truck, you could go south to Taylor, you could plow that one and then go right back to the wayside, you're already doing, you can do that as well.
Well, thankfully, we don't have, this isn't being installed until twenty twenty-five.
We got time, but a little time, uh, people are gonna ask. Cause every year they come in to ask for us to plow that, uh, every, every year.
Definitely, especially when we had a public works being, we'll work through that. Well, Mariners, Mariners Trail most likely would be plowed by parking rack or parks. Well, you're gonna be plowing anyway, this is streets, so. They primarily decide what I want to do.
Yep.
You guys have to bobcat, right?
Not bobcat, that's what it was, not U T V.
Okay, okay, okay. So, yeah, this, this would be one, and that's a very good question. I think we'd all, in a perfect world, loved it, a lot of.
Trail was.
Issues of ice and salt.
Hold on, I agree, it's, it's, it's an expectation that's gonna be there.
So there's Madison.
Yep, and the confusing twelfth Lake Street intersection, um, D O T's preference right now, uh, the original plans showed a crosswalk at the north side of the intersection as it does right now. And these are actually the latest plans that they, uh, just gave to us from last Wednesday.
And they're inconsistent with our last discussion.
Interrupt, uh, plans that actually had that crosswalk removed uh, because of, uh, slopes on the hidden cap frames do not be properly, uh, constructed without gaining more real estate in the northeast corner, uh, of Lake and Memorial Drive, which would be the McDonald's side, and D O T, uh, because of archaeology, archaeological, um, constraints, um, doesn't wanna basically ruffle feathers and, uh, go through all our paperwork. So they basically have said northerly crosswalk is going to be eliminated. We've had internal discussions saying, how are you gonna prevent people from crossing there when they're historically crossing?
I got my Big Mac and a lot of cola.
And, uh, so D O T's, uh, preferred route is that pedestrians or bicyclists would use the, uh, twelfth or Lake Street uh, crossings and then cross Memorial Drive on the southerly portion of the intersection. Uh, we would be, we've been granted permission to install R R F Bs in this location and actually had the suggestion by D O T to put one of those, uh, especially on the southbound lane to, uh, put an R R F B up on a mast arm to elevate it for the southbound traffic, I mean, over the bridge to give that higher advanced notice. Uh, we would also consider putting one northbound, uh, further south around the curb or before the curb of the intersection. Uh, again, providing that advanced notice of pedestrians crossing ahead.
This is just, you drive it, I'm sure every day, we all do, for most days. It, it's, it's tough coming south, you're coming over the hump of the bridge and all of a sudden you're on top of the intersection, northbound, you're coming around that curb. And for many, not me ever, uh, but for many, you're going too fast, coming around that curb, yeah.
So they don't want it where the yellow is.
Right now, D O T's recommendation, these prior plans set and further we told us, uh, that yellow highlighted crosswalk would be eliminated.
And that is because we'd have to get more real estate from McDonald's.
Uh, it, it's more, um, archaeological, historical property, it's a.
And there's water.
It'd be, there were reportedly, uh, Native American whiklons, they were described as when some early settlers came into the heart of it all. Don't you think, and, and that's the official records and it's.
So they can't build a bigger.
You know, something tells me probably between the sea rice coal. You know, something tells me probably between Sea Rice Coal Company and McDonald's. Any of those remnants of that settlement must have been pretty well eliminated, but.
It's already been disturbed.
DOT looked at it and said, we don't want to touch it.
I think that's the safer spot to cross, because you're gonna get more speeding around that corner. You're gonna have more pedestrian traffic coming from the north going to McDonald's that would cross the street there versus on the opposite side.
In the summer, but in the winter, if you're coming across a bridge and you're, anything that's loaded heavy and it's snowed out, and all of a sudden you see something stop there, you can't stop. You'll be lucky not to hit somebody on the other intersection, but whereas it's yellow now, you can just lay on a horn in the brakes and start waving your hands and get that out of the way. Because it's usually real slick and you're gonna have a vehicle. And you're usually going for a ride, right? That's why all the traffic stays the right, so when people turn to McDonald's, when you come across that, you don't end up running.
Just everybody probably recognizes that right now, there's not a crosswalk across Memorial on the south leg of that intersection, right?
I have a question. The yellow on the east side is an eliminated crosswalk, is that correct?
That is DOT's recommendation, yes.
Okay, so then on the south side is where the, the DOT wants the crosswalk. So then how are they gonna get from the pump station to McDonald's?
They will literally cross.
You mean from Colton's to McDonald's?
They will literally cross from the northwest corner to the southwest corner to the southeast corner and come back to the.
But I thought you put the, you're off the door.
You just cross here, this is, north is this way.
Oh, I'm.
This is the bridge.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm the wrong way. Oh, okay. I thought. You know, all the maps, you're north on the top.
Whatever is, oh, the curb up here, the curb portion of sidewalk, is that gonna have railing on it? We don't have those, that information, and we really don't wanna put a railing here. Um right now, the axes are indicating sawcutting and removal.
You're suggesting build as a barrier so people, not only saying you can't cross there, you stop them?
Yeah.
Uh well, I, I, they kind of threw a curve in his last plan, so which came in.
Cross Wednesday?
Yeah, I mean, is it, one, one theory you had offered, Matt, we don't know if this, take this as gospel. Maybe instead of having the, the two ramps coming out at ninety degrees to each other, they figured a pan-type ramp that picks up both crosswalks.
Kind of works there indicating with a little um cheater lane, if you wanna call it, as opposed to ramp, landing, ramp, 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 ramp. It looks like they're looking at a long ramp to that intersection, so that might be their workaround. And again, we haven't talked with DOT since receiving these plans, these plans were sent to us for utility coordination, basically saying, where do you have sanitary water, electric, uh and then responding back. So it's a coordination, not necessarily uh giving information regarding their uh final design. So they're at about fifty percent plans right now. So we'll get another quote-unquote kick at the dog. Uh probably in the next early part of twenty twenty four would be my guess. Man, if we were to put like flashing lights up there or elevate it so that you can see over the bridge, would that allow us to have that intersection? Well, in either case, I mean, when DOT told us they were gonna eliminate this crossing, the RRFP would end up here, here at one intermediate. Uh and then potentially one down here, so like mast arm would be coming across these southbound lanes. Now with this uh configuration, I don't know how we would plan for that at this time. Uh because in order to do that, I don't know where the right-of-way is on the northwest corner. If we have right-of-way, okay, we might as well stick it in the right-of-way, uh behind the sidewalk, a larger mast arm. If uh we don't, we'd have to acquire easement or acquire property.
I know when you're going southbound, when you're on the north side of the bridge, you can't see that intersection.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if your flashing lights there at the uh southwest corner, what is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Corner.
If it's, if it is going to be high enough.
It would be high enough.
So you can see it from Washington Street.
As you're cresting the bridge, you should be able to see those, and it depends on how high you make your mast arm.
Okay.
Usually you're gonna be somewhere around the vicinity of sixteen to twenty feet.
Okay.
Will ask for clarification on that northerly cross, crossing and whether it's out or in. Our concern, because I, my first reaction, let's raise a major statement about this. On the other hand, I don't think we want to delay the project. It's already twenty twenty-five, we've been grateful that this has gotten bumped back. I guess one thing I'm wondering though, is it, is it feasible DOT to do the project and then at, taking the amount of time it will take, pursue the permitting, yada, yada, to do the proper ramp there? That might be tearing something on replacing it, but relative to the overall project, I don't know, this is just a thought.
I would agree with that angle, let's, let's get it done and let's look to keep that, that crosswalk open if we can in the future with properly permitting to get the intersection taken.
Of course. This one will be a permitted crossing. This one DOT said they were not going to permit, that's the reason why they're taking it out. And like I said, now it's in there, so I don't know with NSA, uh the design consultant for DOT, has convinced me that it is feasible, so we, the, the answer is at this time. Something that we need to clarify, but again.
With, and could you put conceivably an R, and RRFP or settlement covers both? That, I'm not sure.
You would probably want to, um.
Yeah, because you know what?
Because if you're stopping for this crosswalk, if you're stopping for here and vice versa, um if you're stopping for this crosswalk traffic.
Yep.
You're.
And probably kind of that you didn't stop in the intersection anyway.
Shouldn't it be right away with a very, a single RRFP, so to speak, or a pair for northbound and southbound.
According to overall, I have kids, like police department statistics, but we've been lucky. I do remember when Subway was on that corner, Colton's is now. And so, you know, hey, you got kids, especially, I want this fast food, I want that. We had a youngster from one of the church camps up north, buses, I don't know if they still stop here in summer much anymore, but he stopped at McDonald's. Got like a broken femur, got stuck by a vehicle there. And who knows what we're gonna see where the M and M is, we've heard different things, and it's under contract now. But generally, it seems it's been fast food, highway-oriented kind of interests. If you were, if you were to put another fast food operation over there, it's only gonna increase the likelihood of pedestrian traffic.
Which is good, I mean, speaking from, when we do have sub bowl trips, when we go to other places, our bus usually does stop where there's a couple of them, so they can go to different ones, they don't just have to go to the Subway or the McDonald's, sometimes there's two or three, and they can go, they can choose where the heck they wanna go.
A lot easier when they're right next to you.
And it, 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 which is the reason we try to stop in those areas when possible. So that's probably why the buses like to go to when Subway was there, because they can go to either or, you're not stuck.
So, you know, this is the intersection, the RRFPs, again, DOT has not come up with any magic pot of money, they've said, oh, well, we'll, we'd support permitting them, both at Madison and twelfth and Lake. It's on your nickel city. My guesstimate is that, oops, well, it looks forty thousand, oh, mast arm, that forty for one, maybe forty to seventy-five or so for the other.
Or ballparking.
Ballparking. Now, the final and most significant cost factor, and I, I would argue the most important one, the city has lobbied for a long time, ever since we were, this project was coming down the pipe, to make a more effective trail crossing at the bridge by widening the sidewalk on the side port McDonald's and putting a crash barrier in there.
And that would be the last slide.
That would be the last slide.
There's three other slides in between here, and the last slide, um.
And last.
Oh, sorry, four slides. So that's basically an example of what RRFPs would look like, um.
Are they using green now?
No, I think they're still using amber, so.
I'm sorry for the crossing. All ours are red, that's.
That looks like a Madison.
Okay, just an example, uh hold on, the tactical insight. Uh so that would be a traditional pole-mounted solar, um just a standard pedestrian crossing side, and then a mast arm, uh solar RRFP, uh so giving you kind of a generic uh look at to what we could expect uh in that quarter. So, uh. Beam guard, uh again, uh all the beam guard is going to be removed, some of it will be replaced in areas, I mentioned this before, so this is the Village Inn. The trail is, in DOT's opinion, significantly off the paved shoulder. Uh therefore not required to be reinstalled. So here, beam guard would be placed, the trail uh heads back towards the lake, so pretty much from here up to feeding in this segment would be removed and not reinstalled. Uh similarly, two additional slides. The other uh aspect, um there's been talk by the Friends and Mariners Trail to try and widen the trail from eight foot to ten foot. In areas where the trail is in close proximity to the paved shoulder, they are looking at possibly using a different type of beam guard, metal versus wood beam guard post, which narrows up the footprint, and they think they can possibly shift that a little closer to the paved shoulder, uh thus providing some additional room for widening of the trail. That we're hoping might be able to be accommodated at the same time that this project is all being done. So still some discussion on that, but again, in this area, we're looking at removal of the beam guard from Columbus North up to the uh wayside parking and one more segment. Basically up to the Roosevelt intersection. So now the next slide, um is what Greg was just alluding to, trying to make pedestrian combinations uh for bike and pedestrians on the east side of the bridge by widening the sidewalk from eight foot to ten foot, adding a urban wall and a railing on top of that, creating a separation. By doing so, right now, crossing the bridge, all four lanes are twelve feet, plus a two-foot buffer off of each sidewalk. Uh DOT has still required a two-foot buffer, and we're looking at modifying the location of the center line of the pavement, being roughly a foot to two foot towards the west, and going a four-foot lane, ten-foot lane, right around a ten-foot lane and a twelve-foot lane. And I say right around a four-foot lane, because we'd be looking at putting the striping on the west side of that uh ten-foot other lane. That twelve-foot, ten-foot, ten-foot, twelve-foot configuration is what is consistent north of the bridge as far as the original pavement. South, Mariners Trail, south at twelve, is actually twelve, twelve, twelve. Across the bridge is twelve, and then narrows up to twelve, ten, ten, twelve.
So it narrowed down at the bridge, same with it is north of the bridge.
Correct. We are still working on um the configuration of the plans, uh we've been trying to work with NSA, DOT's consultant, uh on both the bridge and Memorial Drive, to see if that can be lumped into the DOT's project, so it's all built on the same entity. Just received a phone call this morning, saying, from NSA, saying, DOT does not want a part of their project. And the city has two choices, do it before or do it after the resurfacing. Don't ask me why, but that's the DOT's determination. So right now, uh we're thinking that we would much rather be in there before the bridge resurfacing. So as such, we'd be looking at late summer, early fall of twenty-four to uh basically add that two-foot block extension and a parapet wall segment of the bridge, making combinations uh for the pedestrians there prior to uh the construction project in twenty-five. By doing that, that may also alleviate the pedestrian detour um for the bridge construction, that would be Madison to Sixteenth.
And that's kind of a good news, bad news, like it'd be a lot easier in some respects to make part of DOT project. Can't guarantee it, but generally, we are. We'll see if they limit our universe of contractors to DOT qualified or DOT experienced, although we have a few of those around. We have the question Matt had raised, is there some of that like concrete flatwork that that sidewalk, we could do with our own person? Uh everything comes at a cost, and again, rough numbers on this have been put in, three to five hundred thousand. I would hasten to add that we anticipated, when we amended TID number twelve, the hotel TIF, to add the redevelopment site, that's still a redevelopment site, maybe, at the M and M. To say that would be an eligible expense out of that TID, and we put it in the project plan for three hundred thousand. And that TIF, we could spend the money six ways to Tuesday, I suppose, but that TIF right now is doing fine. Its annual revenues are exceeding the one mandatory spend we have there, which is debt service on the borrowing that was done for the grant, the TIF grant for the hotel. And revenue this year was about a hundred and three thousand, the debt service was fifty-four, fifty-five. I checked the date today. The debt service on that loan, it varies a bit, but it's in the high fifties to sixty-ish for the balance of borrowing, so. Uh it's not cheap, uh we've provided for it in a TIF. It's in an area where we hope with more redevelopment, we're gonna see more pedestrian traffic, not less. And I'm here to tell you, if you've either walked, tell me if you've either walked or ridden a bike across that bridge, if you really feel safe. We let people ride their bikes on the sidewalk by ordinance into rivers. Uh but you're pretty exposed to the traffic there, and it seemed, I, I've not done a study, but I bet you ninety percent of the pedestrian traffic on that bridge is on the downriver McDonald's side, that's where you see people coming and going. That's certainly where the Mariners Trail traffic sucks it over, so. Might we be able to reach out to some community funding sources to help with that? Maybe. But this is gonna require a decision that's part of next year's budget and our capital plan.
I don't think we need to reach out for resources for that, we should give the resources.
I like that, it's more creative things we can reach out. Now, maybe the, the widening of the trail down where the gargrels are, and you know, Friends Mariners Trail's gonna strive at it.
That's a want.
Yep.
This, in my opinion, is indeed safe.
I'm, I'm, I'm overjoyed to hear that, I hope that's a widely held opinion. We've got a phenomenal trail system, and it's getting more and more used, and that's the weak link. That and I need to give my butt here to easement for up East River Street, so we can leave that. Probably all tired looking at horses and standing there. That's uh where we're at, so, you know, ideally, that could be like a, it should be nice if that work is done twenty twenty-four, if it could be a post-Labor Day then. Because it is probably gonna be. going to mean squeezing either all traffic over to the west half or at least shutting down that.
One more.
The right most northbound lane. But that improvement would just be huge.
Some of those guardrails kind of concern me, that they don't want those there, especially by Village Inn. Makes me more nervous than the other two spots pointed out, because the Village Inn one seems like it peaks up like this. And god darn, that's close.
There is something to be said for the feeling of being protected a little bit.
Especially at that spot. The other two spots, I mean, it'd be nice to have guardrails in the whole thing, but if I had one, then I'd be pissed off about that's the one. Because it kind of, if you back on that slide, it kind of leans back towards the highway. Then back down, then it leans, I think it's twice first two months. I could, close enough for my number.
I think DOT's criteria is 10 to 12 feet. And yeah, I don't recall the exact reference that they're.
It's gotta be darn close.
But because of the paved shoulder on which issue lighter, the actual traffic is, you know, 20, 25 feet away.
It also keeps you going at a high rate of speed until you get off the time. But honestly, DOT pretty much dictates, and we've even got to, if you think about it, to go through some of the waysides on the trail, there are a couple of places we've got big rocks strategically placed and it's not, doesn't help me let that happen. But you got to get that big rock out of our clear zone. So that's not going to be a major cost, but that was kind of a surprise that only now has that become an issue. So this is a big pride. I don't even know what DOT's got on this total project. It's maintenance, but it's important maintenance. And honestly, these pedestrian improvements are a big deal in town. So that's what we have on that. Any other questions?
All right.
No, go ahead, Bonnie. Sorry.
You know, that intersection by Roosevelt, why aren't they straightening that out and making it more of a?
Traditional. I'm gonna say past history because of crashes, because it's already skewed. Intersection, they actually have that deceleration, acceleration lane going southbound. And then similar to a lot of higher rate on-ramps, off-ramps, or basically county highways to state trunks, or whatever, they have the J turns or the separated medians. So as you're coming northbound, there's that look to cross southbound. And that's primarily to make sure that the intersection is kept safe. Basically a crash reduction.
But it's so hard to see when you're coming off of rural onto Memorial Drive and then turning south. It's very hard to see the traffic coming from behind you.
Yeah, it does.
I agree.
Everybody says yes, but we're gonna leave it anyway?
I have a plan actually in for that intersection. I don't think they are making significant modifications to it.
I mean, all they have, all they'd have to do is just take that one lane so you could stop like this and look left as opposed to stopping here and looking over here.
Who has the final say on that?
You.
They did.
Okay.
So yeah, right now this is basically the acceleration lane. Yeah, you could eliminate this in theory and have a more perpendicular, but then you're literally not in a position to utilize acceleration lane.
But you're not in a position to do that on any of the intersection. Or at least that's the point one. I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
We can have DOT take a look at that.
Yeah, because all the, you're right, all the other intersections, I don't have that.
Which would be Columbus, Madison.
I always thought it was back when, yep, all those warehouses, they used to be different elements and stuff. That was probably for trucking. The way to make that intersection to get out of office. We don't need it now that way, the way it's configured now.
Definitely wondered about that. You know, we used to have so much traffic, people going to work and coming from work with our industries, but Roosevelt didn't serve many of those. Unless it was laid out that way before. There was a four-lane Memorial Drive, which.
I think my friend she's using the gas station up at the corner more.
A lot.
It's an industrial building. Yeah, they're.
Eastern.
Where, uh, I'm from, uh, but you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the whole, like where the parking lot is, there was a gas station up in that parking lot or something.
And Roosevelt, we can't really do, we aren't really looking at anything in that intersection without Roosevelt reconstruction.
Nah, we're known.
And obviously we'd need DOT for calls.
So good point, Bonnie. So Matt will go back, he'll ask DOT what the reason is and if they can get that changed. They have the final say on it according to.
I know Matt's been keeping the Public Works Committee updated, unless we just figured it's good to raise to council.
Yes.
Especially that investment that's going to be needed next year. Next up, report on Monsanto class action, PCV litigation and settlement payment received by the city. I've been meaning to get this on a couple of work sessions because I think it's important that you at least have the information up record. This was, as I understand it, Attorney Bruce did it as further, he was an opt-out class action. And there were over 2,300 municipalities around the country that were identified as eligible to participate. They were basically any permitted cities, villages, cabbies, in some cases harbor entities that had NPDES permits for sanitary sewer or had a support permits for stormwater and that were located on a body of water impacted by PCVs. I think it's all great leagues and then as far as bodies of water. We presumably got notice with a certified mailing. I don't recall seeing it. Nobody here recalls seeing it. We didn't opt out by the deadline. It appears to be best for already who's got some communities didn't. There were 137 identified and five, which I identified in the backup, opted out nationwide. There were over 2,300, yeah, over 2,300 and 137 opted out. So we have the payment. The thing is, along with the settlement comes agreeing to release Monsanto from claims where it are now releases polluted at least surface waterway. It does, it's a long document, it's a bunch of documents, but it does make clear that it doesn't preclude actions, obviously, by the federal or state government in response to or at least. So did have Jack double check because he was not terribly familiar with this concept of an opt-out class action. It's like, you're in, but unless you take yourself out of your bomb by the results, that's scary. It's very scary, but that's, that's where we're at. And where, as you saw from the list, I just provided, downloaded the list from Wisconsin, you know, Manitowoc, St. John Bay, Aaron had a lot of shoreline communities. The only opt-outs were generally big cities, Manhak.
Yeah.
Milwaukee, Green, Eddie James. So wanted to basically report this for the record and see if you had any questions.
So you're gonna put the money?
Oh.
I mean, like opting out, I mean, I wasn't expecting.
I had something direct, but I was, I was thinking to just split it between the wastewater utility and the stormwater utility.
And what is it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and three cents.
Those are the areas if we ever had to do more extensive testing, you know? I don't know.
I don't really know what it means though.
I'm sorry. So unless directed, otherwise I'd split it between wastewater utility and stormwater utility.
Should break the formal action on it just because.
Right. Suppose, or I can certainly state it for the record if you want that minutes.
Name it opposed to it.
If anybody wanted separate quote on that, happily, but I'll just.
Yeah, well, just make it a record. Yeah, that's saying yes to it, not just doing it.
And yeah, man, if the minutes can reflect, I noted it too, unless, unless someone wanted it on future agenda for a while, well, we'll split it.
Which we didn't.
Thank you.
I'm a C.
Oh yeah, update. I threw this on this agenda kind of last minute, so I did Chief Miner pass on his being here, but he, actually he and Elizabeth have been working and our community service officer, we've been working on some recent activities. There's a lot more going on than this, like every other day. And I'm saying there's garbage cans out of the street or there's long grass and a lot of things are being taken care of before city hall notices them. But I would note, I think all of you got last week, a contact council email about a property on Roosevelt that has been a longstanding problem. I think you saw my reply to the resident that that property had had more than three offenses or violations within a 12-month period. It had gone through the city's, I'm sorry, nuisance property ordinance. There was a fine levied in municipal court, it was a $500 fine and since that's the minimum. The owner has not complied with the abatement plans of the city yet. February filed the Manitowoc County Circuit Court to get a, an injunction allowing the city to go on to the private property, which we don't normally do, to remove stuff that's there in violation of the ordinance and abate the nuisance. That ruling actually came out in June. The city's prosecuting attorney, Mr. Thurmer, did seek an amended filing, making clear that the city does not have a responsibility to store anything that's removed, but can dispose of it. And if any of it is disposed of in a manner that results in revenue, that can be counted against the cost of the abatement, which will be billed to the property owner and go against the property if it isn't paid. So we'll be, without being too specific, we'll be assembling resources and expect that abatement activity will occur within the next two weeks. So hold tight there. Not saying the city will ultimately recoup the cost. I hope we do, but it needs, it needs to be dealt with. Very recently, the owner of a commercial property here in town that has been the location of multiple code violations was given notice that they're in violation of the chronic nuisance ordinance and they are meeting with, is it Police and Elizabeth? It's you as well? Are you on that?
I think just.
Just the police, okay, on Wednesday to likewise work out the abatement plan for that property. So going through the process, Lord knows, it's not fast. Community service officer also has been out there contacting property owners who have tall growth in their terraces, you know, native grasses, trying to help out the butterflies, whatever, but that also violates the ordinance, which said those areas should be maintained as turf grass and also in some cases violates safe vision triangles can create hazard for motorists and pedestrians. That's in keeping with some discussions. A, it's the existing ordinance. B, it's been discussed for too long with staff and the Public Works Committee going back to for current public work staffing. And so it's also in keeping with the notice. We got a July newsletter out with the utility bill saying you're going to be contacted. We're going to give people some leniency because the city's let this happen for a long time. So you can get your perennials, your milkweed, whatever, out of those areas this fall, but expect that come spring, you're going to get cited if this is going on. So, and we are getting a few follow-up calls on that. I don't know if any of you have.
That pine tree that we had an issue, because I.
There is a property over there where, I don't even know if there's a sidewalk, because we do define where there's not a sidewalk. It's so far back from the edge of pavement.
There's like three, four, five houses, you know, and, because I was on public works at the time, we took a field trip out there.
And there was not staff following, but I think it was represented.
They really got away with it quite a lot. So I just wanted to make sure that we're doing this, we're doing this. So.
If there's no sidewalk, what, what statistics?
I think it's in this article, but I don't remember. Maybe I don't. Oh, the paren, there's the second paragraph, where there's no sidewalk, the ordinance requires that the area four and a half feet back from the curb be treated as a terrace area. I'd have to check, but I, I don't remember if it also referenced a gravel shoulder. Some like over a pine tree, you don't have curb. But generally, if it's got curb and no sidewalk, it's a four and a half foot. So I still think there ought to be an inception for people who plant like flowers around their curbside mailbox, which is within the area you can't park. So it's not, if it's next to your driveway, then that five feet or so, because people do that all the time. And I don't think that's inconsistent with the work that's in town. But I'll run my petunias out if you may. Okay. So that's, that's an area. The other thing that, at the start of this list, these things related to code enforcement, then it goes a bit more things about criminal nature, but Chief has been talking with me and the city attorney and Elizabeth have been working on a couple of these. These are some draft, some ordinance proposals that are coming to council. First off, an ordinance proposing that an annual city license be required for operation of hotels and motels. The intent is, any ordinance like that would have a minimal fee, but it would identify circumstances that can result in city revocation or non-renewal of a license. For example, perhaps not having to wait for three offenses and getting a municipal court ruling to, to have any chronic nuisance addressed. Maybe if there's one outstanding non-compliance issue where there's been the opportunity to cure and it just hasn't happened, the ability to come to council with a recommendation for revocation or non-renewal if it's been a long time. I haven't seen the draft, but I'm talking with Ben. He felt it would be important to keep the standards for hotels, motels, the same as what would exist for vacation rentals. So that may need revisiting that ordinance as well. The intended is to make it hard for people to do business, but to get on top of things faster than clearly there are repeat problems. So that'd be council's call as far. And, and this is drawing on some examples from other communities like over in Fox Valley. A revised adult entertainment ordinance, that's taken changes Manitowoc made in their adult entertainment ordinance. I think far their separations from certain uses like churches, schools, daycares, and we do, they may have a few additional land uses where a separation is required. The only thought there was, well, we, there may be some constitutional limits here, ordinances, talking about neighborhood impact, public safety, proximity to certain uses hold up. And we don't necessarily, for a lot of businesses, I think as matter of policy, you'd like to be more attractive than our neighboring community. I'll leave it to you, but I'm not sure in this one that we do. We don't want to become a path of less resistance. So that will be presented. The chief would also like the council to look at a new local ordinance prohibiting prostitution. That would be in addition to existing state statutory prohibitions. That would be a case where we don't currently have, as I understand it, city ordinances on this, but kind of like we talked about drug activity or things we can do locally to thwart some of these things are local tools. I guess I'd like the chief to.
Because we can't supersede what state does. We can't be.
Then what state law is that? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not going to add.
What's that?
You can't for like strip clubs, um, for being located and the fire was saved that years ago and you have a regulated state.
But I think it's at the community level where you see these prohibitions just on distance for certain uses.
Oh, this is okay.
Yeah, that's what we've got.
Well, prostitution is just illegal. You don't need that.
Well, pro, yeah, prostitution.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, what prompted that? I mean.
Again, I'll let the chief explain then. He felt it would be good to have some local tools as opposed to relying solely on the state system.
Okay.
And this next one, again, he could speak to it better, but an ordinance establishing penalties for people who are aware of and fail to report or act to prevent child section abuse. So I'll let him speak to that one as well. But obviously trying to minimize all people responsible if they are, if not, maybe the, the primary aggressor violator there, but if they've been part of.
Again, I.
Something. They do, but I think kind of like we talked about with council with the, with some of the drug issues, to the extent we can address them locally in addition. Sometimes prosecuting can be on a faster track. So those are more, more in the way of a heads up.
Okay.
That's all I've got with the exception of the update. Remember, we all have visitors September 18 meeting, including representatives of the swim club and representatives from the Herring condo association. Next. Next meeting, I'll also have a bunch of public hearings that evening related to some items planned, that mission sent to you last time. Uh first meeting in September, so Tuesday is the fifth, yeah. First meeting in September, I know off the top, people have, something just came into my mind, went right out. Oh, uh various resolutions for financing for some of the water and or sewer work, the apartment program things. And there's something else, but like I said, it just took away. So that's all we have for tonight.
Put in for motion, dude, here?
I'll make that motion.
Just wait for that bill, council discussion. If none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Name and opposed, motion carries.
Brewers on the third inning.
September.